Okay, good evening, everyone. I think I see that our attendees have joined us for the meeting tonight. So, welcome, welcome this evening and welcome back from, from spring break. I'm going to call our public meeting of the Board of Education to order. We're going to begin, the board would like to begin by acknowledging and thanking the First Peoples of the Hunkamenum Language Group, on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. We have some announcements to start off with. I'm going to turn that over to trustees. I could just see who's got an announcement. Trustee Goldstein, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to speak to Earth Day, which takes place on April 22 each year. Since it starts in 1970, Earth Day has become an internationally celebrated event focused on promoting a healthy, sustainable habitat for all celebrating, for all. Celebrating Earth Day serves as a conscious reminder of how important it is for individuals and communities to protect our planet. This year, the theme for Earth Day is Invest in Our Planet. In Richmond, schools will plan for different individual classroom and school activities to honor Earth Day. Many green teams composed of students across grades will lead the way in designing and supporting environmental initiatives. Earth Day shares a connection to the district's strategic plan Priority One: Inspired Learners. This strategic priority includes a focus on learner involvement in activities that raise awareness of and increase engagement in global citizenry and environmental stewardship. In addition to Earth Day, our school celebrates and supports environmental stewardship in a variety of ways throughout the year, whether it be through participation in district equalized grants, district initiatives such as Lights Out Lunch and Zero Waste Campaigns, or through school-wide and individual actions. Richmond students and staff demonstrate commitment to our environment today and every day. That concludes the management.
Thank you very much, Trustee Goldstein. Are there other announcements? Trustee to Rodney?
Yes. Education Week planning is currently underway for Education Week, which will take place in Richmond School District from April 25th to April 29th. This, and this year's theme is Connection, which we all want after COVID, which highlights the importance of coming together as a community and recognizes significant roles that schools have played in providing a place of connection for students and family during the pandemic. As with last year, families and community members will be able to visit our district website to see samples of learning over the course of the week. And each day will focus on a particular theme, connecting to place, diversity, equity, and inclusion, exploring healthy living and well-being, learning together and sharing our gifts. Students, classrooms, schools, and community partners have been invited to submit photos, videos, and other examples of their learning. And Education Week is also an opportunity to highlight many of the priorities of the Board's strategic plan, which is inspired learners, equity, and inclusion, and a connected learning community. And we look forward to highlighting learning as we celebrate Education Week in Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee to Rodney. And Trustee Larson, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I have a Budget 2022 announcement. Briefs regarding the 2022-2023 annual budget will be accepted without prior notice at the April 27, 2022 regular meeting of the Board. Please note that budget updates will be made available on the district's Budget 2022-2023 website. All budget feedback will be considered by the Board as part of the budget process, which is anticipated to be completed by May of 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Larson. I have one other announcement, and that is, starting in April, the Board of Education will conduct its Board meetings back in person, providing online options for trustees and other members who cannot attend in person, as well as providing online access to the public via Zoom. And standing committee meetings for April will be held virtually, through which the committee chairs will engage in conversations with our partner groups to determine what their preferred meeting format is and establish that for May and June. I believe our Secretary Treasurer has a few words about meeting protocols for this evening, Ms. Wang.
Sure. Thank you, Chairperson. Just a reminder for the public joining us this evening. We will have two question periods, at which time we'll be read the questions that were received in the Board Meeting email account. If you want to submit questions, please feel free to do so to boardmeetings@sd38.vc.ca. And also for the public joining us this evening, you'll be watching and listening to the meeting, but you won't be able to speak or chat during the meeting. So if you have questions, feel free to send the questions to the email Board Meetings email account or through the Q and A feature in Zoom. We already received one question there today. So, and there will be a recording of the meeting, and we'll be making the recording of the meeting available for public viewing after this meeting. So that's my announcement. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. And can I confirm then, are there any materials not included in the packages available to the public?
Yeah, for sure. So we did receive a budget briefing from RTA, and that is being posted on our website. All other materials are included in the Board Meeting package, and we have made it available to the public on our website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to item two then, adoption of our agenda. Got a mover for that? Trustee Larson, thank you. Second, the trustee sergeant, any discussion? We'll call the question, all in favor are adopting our agenda for this evening? Any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you. We do not have any presentations or special recognitions this evening, and as just mentioned, we do have one brief that has been submitted, and that's from the Richmond Teachers Association. So I am looking to see if Ms. Baberstock is there. Great, well, welcome. We'll give it over to you.
Hi, good evening, trustees, and thank you for the opportunity to submit a brief, and I recognize that this was a last-minute edition, partly because of recent announcements that have happened with the new Indigenous-focused graduation requirement and the timing of spring break. The Richmond Teachers Association also had a meeting on Monday with the Richmond Teachers Association Indigenous Education Committee, and felt that timely feedback was necessary to
coincide with this announcement of the new Indigenous-focused graduation requirement that will be coming to schools for the 2023-2024 school year. However, what is imperative is the planning that goes ahead of time when you are in that transition year for a new graduation requirement. And so I'm not going to read the brief out to you, because you obviously can do that, but what I want to really communicate is I know that Richmond has done implementation well. We know how to do implementation well. We know how to foster pedagogical growth, and we've done that through experiences recently. If you talk about the new curriculum, some of the highlights that I can think of is in past years, we've actually seen additional TTOC time provided so that teachers could actually collaborate and have dedicated release time to do that collaboration on new curriculum. And this was through guaranteed TTOCs, and it was actually very successful, because teachers could count on this dedicated time. We've also seen support for literacy leads in terms of fostering pedagogical growth. We've also recently seen the support for career-life connections and the blocks that were provided in order to help prepare secondary schools for successful implementation. And so it is with that lens that I made this brief and submitted it to the school district, because we know how to do success, but success takes planning. And that planning needs to start now. It needs to start within the budget cycle, and it does need some monetary support. I do recognize that the Ministry of Education is undergoing an engagement feedback process, but those results are not going to be available until late August. And for me, I really believe that that is actually too late, because I know how planning happens within a school district. Planning happens through the budget process and through the staffing process. So that is why this brief is coming to you tonight. And we have outlined some requests, which you will see included in the brief with some estimated costing. We also recognize the structural shortfall that the district is facing and the news over spring break that did not see any increases to the operating grants. So we know that there are difficult decisions ahead of the Board, but we also feel that this exciting news requires additional support. And that additional support should be within the Richmond School District, but it should actually be provided by the Ministry of Education. And when an announcement like this is made, it actually should be made with funding accompanying it. And that isn't there at this time. Perhaps it will come, but I really do think next year is this opportunity, which we can do the planning and the support to make sure we do what Richmond does well, which is implementation. So you'll see some ideas that we have shared. I've also outlined some other ideas, whether that is a block dedicated for a teacher or whether that is hiring contract TTOCs to be able to support release time so that there can be teacher collaboration and planning. Those are a variety of options that could be used. I do think the Career Life Connections model that was used about two years ago is one that actually engages teachers who are excited to take this opportunity, to lead in this opportunity, and to plan and collaborate to build on success. With that support in place, the following year, these teachers will actually be able to help build on the exciting work that they have done, and they can actually help teachers in the following year as we continue to build on the new Indigenous-focused graduation requirement. To me, when it comes down to it, is forward-thinking builds energy for success. And that is why I submitted this brief on behalf of the Richmond Teachers Association is because now is the time to do that forward-thinking and planning. Now is the time to build on the excitement and the energy for success. And with that, I appreciate your time to listen, willing to answer any questions, but also hoping that this brief will be forwarded to the budget planning process. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Baberstock. I do see one, one comment or question, so trustee sergeant?
Well, thank you very much for your brief, and I get, you know, all this just happened. You know, at the provincial level, we're, we're talking about all the things that are coming up as well. And I would, I'm sure your association is putting forward answering the, the feedback and the implementation and all that. But I'm wondering too, if RTA is going to consider doing that, or perhaps tomorrow at, I want to say BOG, but others might not know what that is, the Budget Advisory Working Group. We can talk about a potential for the district to put in, and perhaps staff are working on that now, but I think it is, even if it is in August, it's really important to make sure that we state, you know, what will be needed as far as good implementation, because this is very exciting news. I think we all agree with that, and it's just making sure that it's good implementation. So I, I would, I would move recommendation to the budget process and with the hope of more discussion tomorrow at BOG. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, trustee sergeant. So that's a move to refer the brief to our budget process. Is there a second? Trustee Larson, thanks. Any further discussion? Not shutting down questions, or may it still be other questions, and we can still entertain those. Okay, all in favor, referral? Great, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. We look forward to continuing the discussion. It's an important step toward reconciliation. I think we would, we would agree on that. How do we move forward and, and advocate for the support that it, that it needs and make those prioritize that? That's a very good question. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees from Ms. Baberstock? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our next item, we're at, we're at our first question period. So chance for questions from the public on items that are on the agenda. And just a reminder too, that if you have a question or something that's further down on the agenda, we might get, might have it answered, and we do have a second question, question time. So you can also wait and see if your question is answered, and you'll have another opportunity later, later down.
So Chairperson, at this time, at this time, there's no questions in the Q and A or through the email box for the school district. I just, I did want to let you know that there was one question. It did not relate to an agenda item. So staff are responding directly to the person who's asked the question. We're happy to continue that conversation offline.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I will move to item four on our agenda, and that's our report from our executive team. Superintendent Robinson, over to you.
Right, thanks very much, Chairperson. So just a few brief comments. First of all, I wanted to talk briefly about the Health and Safety Guidelines update that was brought forward just before spring break. I think most folks are aware of the provincial announcement just before the break, which adjusted restrictions in what will hopefully continue to be a gradual return to pre-pandemic times. As has been communicated, the K-12 mask mandate has been lifted, and that masks are now a personal choice in schools. We've just been back from spring break for a few days, but what we're seeing so far is a very respectful approach been taken in schools with people's personal choices regarding mask use being well-respected, and that's exactly what we were hoping to see, and certainly what we're encouraging to happen. So schools will gradually be reopening their doors to visitors in the coming weeks as part of this latest announcement. We certainly understand that some parents are understandably anxious to get back into their kids' schools after such a long absence. At the same time, we know that other parents remain quite cautious and would prefer that things not open up completely quite yet. So principals will be working with their staffs and their packs to ensure that a careful and well-thought-out transition takes place over the coming weeks and months in each school community that considers everyone's needs and comfort levels. And principals will be communicating directly with their, their parent communities as, as those decisions are made. I wanted to also speak briefly to graduation events. At this time, we are very pleased that our plan is to move ahead with in-person valedictory ceremonies for the first time since 2019. And that is just one of the best pieces of news, I think, that we've been able to talk about for a long time. So all 10 secondary schools are now planning for an in-person ceremony that will include all graduating students and invited guests as well. So schools will be communicating with their communities shortly if they haven't already done that. At this time, I'm going to ask the Deputy Superintendent Ryan to provide an update on secondary school schedules for the next year, please.
Apologies, navigating a bunch of documents. So thank you, Superintendent Robinson. And I will take a few moments to update the board and the public on what is being planned in relationship to secondary organizational structures for the 2022-2023 school year. So I'll start with some important background. And we're grateful that currently there's no public health guidance that requires the district to mandate secondary organizational structures or timetables, as has been the case for the past two years due to the pandemic. Also, it's important to know that the district conducted several surveys at the secondary level prior to spring break, and we are very grateful for the survey participants. We have received approximately 3,500 student surveys, 2,500 parent surveys, and just over 500 secondary staff surveys, 400 teaching, and approximately 100 support staff. The purpose of the survey was to gather feedback, perspectives, preferences from students, parents, teachers, support staff, and administrators in relationship to various organizational structures that have been implemented over the past two school years. And this information will assist the collaborative decision-maker processes that are an integral part of our school district. I also want you to know that staff are working on a district executive summary, which I anticipate will be posted to the district homepage early next week. And as well, school summaries will be included for each school, and they will have information, results, and feedback from students and parents' preferences. Again, those I anticipate will be available and on school-based websites early next week. It's important to note too, that the Board is committed to student voice and parent input, which is articulated in the Strategic Plan Priority Five: A Connected Learning Community. Goal Three states our students' voices and perspectives are valued, encouraged, and embedded. Goal Four, Objective One states that the district will invite and encourage staff, parents, students, and community partners to be involved in school and district decision-making. And lastly, from a background standpoint, all ministry and collective agreement provisions in relationship to secondary organizational structures, timetables will obviously be followed. So now I want to move into how do we bring all of those pieces that I've just shared together and talk about processes, excuse me. So the district has, in collaboration with the RTA, developed processes which incorporate all of the elements I've just shared. Starting immediately and over the next month, secondary school staff will be reviewing survey results for all participant groups and following collective agreement processes which are in place to assist with decision-making. There are a great number of conversations that will be required to inform final decisions on organizational structures at each school. So principals will be working closely with staff at the school level and in consultation with the Assistant Superintendents and Deputy Superintendent at the district level to support consistency in decision-making processes. These are complex processes, and it is our hope to achieve alignment between the various survey preferences that have been identified at each site. That's a large task. So the pandemic has printed, presented us with many organizational challenges such as student cohorts, classes organized to maintain distance, quarter schedules, remote learning, semester schedules, personalized learning time, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. As a school district community, we have chosen to shift our thinking around these challenges and see them as opportunities. We are committed to incorporating into decision-making the various preferences that have been identified based on lived experiences over the past two years. So we're very grateful to the entire Richmond School District community for the resiliency that has been exemplified throughout the pandemic. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Robinson, was there more for the executive report, or would you? I do see one hand. I'm wondering whether we should pause to take the question or a comment. Okay. Thank you. Trustee Lee, would you have a question or comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad Superintendent just came back. I have a question for him. When you were covering the Health and Safety Guidelines update, I wonder if you're in a position to confirm the fact that international students or students returning from the spring break who had traveled overseas, the fact that the mandate not being mandatory does not apply to them, it is still applicable for 14 days? I just wanted that mentioned, if I may.
Yeah, thanks very much, Trustee Lee, for pointing that out. I should have mentioned that as well. Yeah, anybody who's traveled for, that needs to continue to wear a mask when they return for the next 14 days. Thank you for reminding me of that. Yeah.
Thank you.
So Chairperson, unless there are questions about Deputy Superintendent Ryan's report, I'm going to pass things over to Executive Director McMillan, who would like to share some information on the new requirement regarding Indigenous graduation coursework. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. And good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to share a short update as to the recent ministry announcement regarding the Indigenous-focused graduation requirements that were just referenced actually by Ms. Baberstock a few moments ago. So as part of the Province of BC's commitments to truth, reconciliation, and anti-racism, the Ministry of Education will be implementing an Indigenous-focused graduation requirement for all students. The new requirement is intended to build on the work ongoing within BC Education to further integrate Indigenous content into the provincial K-12 curriculum and to support students to graduate with a deeper understanding and knowledge of First Peoples' perspectives, histories, and cultures. The proposed model for the new requirement will allow secondary students to meet those requirements through a variety of existing or new course options, and this will take full implementation in the 23-24 school year. Just for some background, that the proposed change to the program would require students to complete four credits, which is essentially one full year of coursework in order to graduate, or should I say one, one course, which is sometimes broken into two depending on the structure of the course. It may be, and we're, we'll be working on this moving forward, one of the existing Indigenous-focused provincial courses. Another option is a First Nations language course at the grade 10 to 12 grade level, or there could be locally-developed Indigenous-focused courses. And again, this is something all districts in the province will be looking at as we move forward. No changes, just for the reference of parents, would be made to the total number of credits required to graduate, and it wouldn't require any changes to the adult graduation program. Between March 7th and April 22nd, the Ministry of Education is entering a feedback process for this proposed model through a public engagement process, and the ministry is seeking feedback from students, parents, caregivers, teachers, school, and district staff, Indigenous communities, and the public. Prior to spring break, our district sent information to all families and school staff members with links for them to provide their feedback and engage in this process. Based on this feedback, the implementation plan from the ministry is anticipated for August of 2022. In the meantime, at the district level, we'll be engaging in discussion and beginning to consider how to best address and implement this requirement, looking at potential courses, the implementation model, and supports for building capacity as we move to that full implementation for 2023-24 school year. This announcement very much reflects the Board's strategic priorities, specifically Priority One: Inspired Learners and Priority Two: Inclusive Learning, including strategic Priority One Goal Three, which states that Indigenous Peoples' history Which states that indigenous people's history, perspectives and learning approaches are embedded within district planning and practices. We're excited to move forward with this and look forward to sharing more information as we develop our implementation of this new. Indigenous-focused coursework requirement enrichment. Thank you, and I'm happy to field any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. McMillan. Uh, the trustee Goldstein.
Yeah, thank you for that summary. I I'm wondering, do we have any insight as to why the ministry did not incorporate indigenous history? Into its rightful place in the existing Canadian history course. And indigenous culture into its rightful place in. Our current courses of social studies. Why create new courses when we have courses that can incorporate them properly?
I think it's 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 a next step in an evolution, uh, as you rightly identified. In uh indigenous history and perspectives is infused across our curriculum. Both directly um in as part of different courses. As well as through the first people's incorporation of first people's principles of learning. And other ways that we're infusing indigenous perspectives in our education. This, I think, is the next iteration in a dedicated way. To really provide support for deepening that learning. Um, and so that our students, as they have mentioned in the in the ministry briefs, really leave with a deep understanding. What's exciting is that knowing this is part of our curriculum K to twelve, it's infused already. It allows for that building over time with some really dedicated coursework and focus understanding through a variety of means. For students to participate in before they graduate. But it's absolutely, as you've identified, not a standalone, that we're not waiting until this course happens to be discussing indigenous perspectives for sure.
I think I'm not sure if I may, a second question here. The, ah, just had in my head. That'll come to me, sorry. That'll come to me.
Trustee Goldstein, I just want to just want to offer a gentle reminder. Uh, if we can focus on the work of the the district and uh. You you know, questions to do with with the mind, the mindset of of the ministry or the government probably are best addressed. To them and not to our staff. I trust you to botany.
Yeah, so I'm curious then. This coursework, um, because it's it. Four courses and there are, I'm I'm assuming this is. Of uh, over the secondary years, is that correct? Like, is it eight to?
It is in secondary and it's not four courses, it's four credits. Uh, which generally speaking would be a a a course, yes.
Oh, it's only one course.
All the students, if there were more provided, they would certainly have the opportunity to take others.
I see, okay.
But one would be required.
I was thinking, so it's. Four.
Four credits.
Four credits equals one course.
Generally speaking, right.
Generally speaking, I was just curious, you know, how it affects um our students of being able to fit the number of courses they want. To uh get in and and you know, I know that they can only take so many blocks or so many. So I'm just wondering, um, has there been any concern regarding that?
We have, we're just beginning those conversations. As you know, the announcement was made just prior to spring break. And so that's something we'll be entering into, and I'm also believe would believe that there'd be. Uh, through the feedback process, some additional guidance that will come through in the implementation plan.
Okay, that's that's good, because that's, you know, I know it's early days, but I just wondered, you know. Fitting all these things in and students want to do so many things, including electives and and such. So I just trying to figure out how they're gonna fit that all in. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, trustee Goldstein and then trustee sergeant.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, since trustee sergeant hasn't spoken yet, but so I'm happy to give her this space here. But I'll I'll ask that question. Uh, my question is really the same as trustee Thiblotne's. If students have an extra required course to take. In terms of credits. It it it's clear that either students will be taking more credits during the year than they are now, or. They'll be taking fewer electives such as sports, drama, fine arts, shop, et cetera. Uh, I don't see any other options there. I mean, what other options would there be?
In some cases, some of the course offerings can also uh. Address an existing core uh graduation requirement. For example, if it was a first people's English course. You are addressing both an English credit as well as the uh indigenous-focused graduation requirement. Again, we're we're. In the initial conversations as as we get going with this, but that's something we could be looking at as well, knowing that. We want to give students um a variety of opportunities. And there are in the way that the ministry has initially at least laid out this information, a variety of pathways for for achieving this requirement.
I see. Thank you very much.
Trustee Sergeant.
Yeah, thank you very much, um, Ms. McMillan for that explanation. And you know, for me, I think what's really important, I think our community may be confused. Um, or not understanding what this is really about, and I think the big why. Um, and it's a really big, big why, as we know, a deep why. And I think opportunities for that discussion. Would be really important to have. You know, I know it's going to come quick. Um, and a lot of students have already planned their course and. Um, but with families that are not understanding why the ministry would dictate such a thing. And that deeper reasoning for a better society, I think. If if principals had the time at packed meetings coming up or something to really delve deeper into the purpose. Rather than um what students might be missing, I think, you know, would be really important, because I do think. Some of our um community will really wonder, especially with our stu- and our students are getting that in school, you know, the stories and. But um, you know, it it's something that seems like might be taken away from them, but in fact isn't going to enrich. Them. So I know that's a hard go with a couple of months left and already the course planning already have happened generally.
So, yes, and it's just that coming school year. Yes, I know, I appreciate that, and it's something that we can absolutely look to incorporate in our planning moving forward. We do appreciate it's not for this coming September, so we have an additional year, but you're right, it will go by very, very quickly.
Well, and plus students, we have heard have already been planning. Um, you know, they've got a two-year plan already. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for those comments, trustee sergeant, trustee Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, did you call on trustee sergeant to speak first?
Nope, go ahead, trustee Lee.
Thank you. Uh, I wonder if Ms. McMillan uh could make a comment about what I'm going to put forward as. Uh, maybe. Answers that come to me, uh, listening to the questions that has been asked by uh trustee Goldstein and others. I'm thinking that two logical answers, why a at this time. A separate co- course, uh, that is credit, that it's uh required. Uh, instead of making it part of the uh Canadian history uh course. I would suggest that two answers that come to my mind is. Indigenous people are asking for it. And the second uh answer that comes to my mind is it has been overlooked. In the past. Would those two be sort of answers?
I wouldn't want to speculate as to not being involved in the development uh that has led to this this mandate from the ministry. Uh, I think there's a number of of very important reasonings that were developed, but I I really couldn't speak to. How the ministry came to their final decision on this. I do know certainly in terms of our own district's commitment to truth and reconciliation that this is certainly in line. With with those priorities as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think that's it for questions uh for for you, Ms. McMillan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your for your report, and we look forward to hearing um the the progress and the planning that uh. That we start to engage with now. Thanks. Thank you.
So Chairperson. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Yeah. What we'll do now uh is just give some highlights of the amazing things that have been happening around the school district recently. So I'll just wait for the uh presentation. We go. Sorry. So I wanted to uh share first of all, uh. A wonderful experience that I was very privileged uh to take part in, uh, which was some indigenous drum making sessions recently. So. In March, Darren Charlie, who is also known as Quetle Sultan. I hope I'm saying that correctly. Uh, a well-known drum maker from the Stasailis Indian Band located near Harrison Hot Springs. Uh, held some drum making sessions to share his knowledge of drum making and singing with indigenous students in our district. So Darren has more than thirty years uh of drum making experience and was taught by elders from his community. Many of his drums are in use in longhouses in the lower mainland and on Vancouver Island. And he's provided indigenous drum making sessions to our district for several years, uh, and he and supports indigenous ways of learning. While creating space for indigenous students to learn cultural teachings. So I was fortunate to attend two of the drum making sessions uh with indigenous elementary and secondary students earlier this month. And I have to say it was a very humbling experience. Um, Mr. Charlie was a master, not only at drum making, but also at storytelling. And really helping others around him understand the importance uh and cultural relevance of drum making. And it it was truly a privilege uh to learn from him and the students who certainly outshone me. Uh, not only with their drum making skills, but with with their patience. So I am very pleased to be able to share that. Thousand paper cranes for peace. Uh, so students at Woke Elementary recently completed an art piece of one thousand paper cranes. Which is now on display in the main lobby of the school board office. Uh, after reading the books, Sedaco and the Thousand Paper Cranes by Eleanor Core. Sedaco's story of courage and perseverance inspired the class to fold their own cranes in memory of Sedaco and her story. So students spent over a week making these cranes, and it is impossible. To understand certainly what Sedaco went through, uh, folding the cranes gave the students a glimpse into her life. So these paper cranes are, uh, I think, a really beautiful reminder about the importance of building peace in the world, uh, especially at this time. McMath Senior Girls Basketball Team, uh, recently won the B C Girls Sports Triple-A Girls Basketball Provincial Championship. Uh, which was held at the Langley Event Center on March the fifth. We know that the team worked extremely hard, uh, throughout the entire year, as did the coaches. And uh, we're there, we're very thrilled to take home the school's first provincial championship title in history. So on behalf of the district, congratulations, not only to this amazing group of players, but also to the the coaching staff. Job well done. Women's History Month at Deefen Baker. So students, uh, student leaders at Deefen Baker recently created a Women's History Month display. To recognize the importance of International Women's Day. Students reflected on the women who inspired them and shared inspiring sayings from famous women. Including industry leaders, historical figures, authors, current celebrities and athletes. And through this project, students were able to recognize many of the significant contributions made by women throughout history. Next, uh, the Vancouver Kiwanis Music Festival is B C's premier music festival, the oldest and largest of its kind in the province. And actually, one of the largest music festivals in Canada. So every year, over seven thousand music students participate across four distinct events. Including the Jazz Band Festival, the Choral Festival, the Concert Band and Orchestra Festival. And then the main festival for solo musicians and small ensembles. McNair Secondary's Jazz Band received a gold at the Vancouver Kiwanis Festival. Uh, this first place finish was for three pieces, Just Friends, My One and Only Love and Uptown Throwdown. So congratulations to the students and the music director at McNair for this uh amazing accomplishment. A class of students at Quilchina Elementary recently used Lego blocks to build rainbow structures. Uh, after making the structures, students were challenged with a question about their design. How can we adjust the structures to make them stronger? Through a few rounds of discussion and team collaboration, students successfully found different methods to make stronger structures. So this was a great activity for the students to not only spark creativity, but to practice critical thinking and also hone their fine motor skills. Looks like a lot of fun. Students at Spalwax participated recently in the celebration for Saint Patrick's Day. After learning about the history and origin of the Saint Patrick's Day holiday, including traditions like leprechauns wearing green and the pot of gold. Students enjoyed the process of making leprechaun hats. So a variety of fun activities covering art, math, English. And history filled this day of celebration and well done to the Spalwax staff for providing such a great set of opportunities there. And finally, Carnaval at Mitchell Elementary. Um, Mitchell recently organized a school-wide event. To introduce the Quebec Carnival fund to the school's English and French classes. Each day during the week, events focused on one component of carnival. Activities touched on the history of carnival as well as the traditional dances, songs and art activities. And the event ended with a parade celebration. Students and staff danced and sang with Bonhom. Who is known as the official ambassador of the Carnival de Quebec. And in the parade, uh, Bonhom also visited all the classrooms to deliver maple cookies to all the students. It was a fun event for students to learn about culture and celebrate within their school community, and I wish I had known about that. It sounds like a great deal of of fun. Chairperson, that does conclude my report for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Superintendent, and to your team uh for the reports. Always the highlight of our meetings, uh, to remind our, to remind us of why we're here. I was going to ask, I suppose we didn't have the snow, unfortunately, to make the maple, make the maple syrup, but candy, but. For carnival, but uh maybe someone got creative with that too. Trustee Goldstein, did you have a follow-up?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a comment on the superintendent's uh explanation and display of what's been going on in our district. It's very impressive. I was particularly my hats off to one of the student group. That displayed an example of using the arch in stone masonry. In one of those structures, this the lower right one, I was very impressed.
Okay, so noted.
You have a good eye.
Wow. Great, thank you. Uh, let's move on to our next item. And that's approval of minutes from our meeting from February. The uh meeting was held February twenty-third. And those minutes are attached, starting on page seven of the agenda package, looking for a motion to adopt those minutes. Trustee Larson, thank you. Trustee to plot me seconding, any, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor adopting those minutes? None opposed, thank you. That's carried. There's also a record of an in-camera meeting of the board I held Wednesday, February twenty-third. Attached in your agenda package. And now we'll move to business arising. Uh, item six A is our. Capital bylaw, and there's a recommendation here. With a report from our executive director for Facility Services, Mr. Frank Guyer. And so, Mr. Guyer, welcome. I'm wondering if uh you'd like to speak at all to your report and recommendation or any any context you'd like to give us before we. Move to do motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, yeah, I I don't have a lot a lot to say, except this is a. A very promising, it's it's been long awaited, uh, having a uh. Having a response like uh we received from the ministry to our twenty-two, twenty-three capital plan. The board approved the uh, the plan back in uh June of last year. It says June twenty-two, it was actually June twenty-one, my apologies. And we received a letter from uh the executive director of Capital Management Branch. Uh, on March fifteenth that listed off the projects that have been supported and or approved by the ministry. Um, the two big highlights for us obviously is uh for the first time since two thousand and nineteen, we received uh new seismic upgrade projects. Um, on the support list, and what the support list means is these are projects that are supported by the ministry. For us to proceed, for the district to proceed to business case development. And once the business case uh or the project definition report is approved by government and the parties execute a. Project agreement, then the projects approved and we proceed to design and construction. So we're very excited to get our top two priorities um in our capital plan approved or supported, I should say. So it's at Dixon Elementary and at Beck Elementary. We also received a number of school enhancement program projects, including um. Most of them are ba- well, two of the three projects were based on on a safety requirement, so. Uh, lab ventilation upgrades, this is basically fume hood upgrades. Uh, the first phase, uh, which which encompasses four school, uh, secondary school sites. As well as uh, uh, sawdust extraction system replacement at McNair. So those are.
So those are two that were basically safety-driven projects. Plus, we did get the major lighting upgrade, which we're at McNath Secondary, which we're very happy about because we need to reduce our kilowatt hour energy consumption. And this, and in projects like these go a long way to reach our goals as well as the provincial goals. We also received funding for digital controls under the Carbon Neutral Capital Program at Bing and McRoberts. And we once again received funding for one universal, universally accessible playground at Maple Lane. The Building Envelope Program. We, a year ago, we were told that Blair and Beck were approved. That was re-announced. It's more of a staggered process with the ministry. So we're going to be proceeding to design on these two projects. And finally, we did get another bus replacement approved. And this is one of these, it's one of the smaller buses for children, special needs of a hundred and roughly a hundred and twenty thousand. We're going, or sorry, once, if the board approves this bylaw and we submit it to the ministry, we'll be starting discussions with with the ministry and with the Association for Student Transportation to see if we can upgrade that to an electric bus. This funding covers the cost of a diesel bus. We're really pleased to find out that the type A two buses are now available in electric. It's a significant cost difference, but there's a lot of incentives to help knock that down. So we're, we will be between our energy manager, myself, and our transportation manager will be going after that. So basically, it's a good news story this year. It's better than we've seen in previous years. And in accordance with the ministry's project procurement procedures and guidelines, the board must adopt a capital bylaw for for this program, for the capital program. And yeah, and so that bylaw is attached and must be approved by three, by way of three readings and adopted. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guyer. You're right. This is, this is good news, especially with our seismic projects that have been supported and with a with a really excellent project team ready and waiting to take those on. So good news indeed. Okay, we have a procedure for the bylaw. Just, and I'm not seeing any questions at the moment. So I'm going to proceed with with reading the capital bylaw and, sorry, just checking. Does everybody have that? I'm just checking for the page number. My agenda down here. But I do have the bylaw, so I will just start reading my agenda. By law of the board, by the Board of Education, a school district number thirty-eight Richmond, here and after called the board, to adopt a capital plan of the board pursuant to sections one, four, three, subsection two and one, four, four subsection one of the School Act. Where, whereas in accordance with provisions of the School Act, the Minister of Education, here and after called the minister, has approved the capital plan of the board. Now, therefore, the board agrees to the following. A, authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute project agreements related to the expenditures contemplated by the capital plan. B, upon approval, to proceed, commence the projects and proceed diligently and use its best efforts to complete each project substantially as directed by the minister. C, observe and comply with any order, regulation, or policy of the minister as may be applicable to the board or the projects. And D, maintain proper books of account and other information and documents with respect to the affairs of the projects as may be prescribed by the minister. Now, therefore, the board enacts as follows. Number one, the capital bylaw of the board for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three capital plan as approved by the minister to include the supported projects specified in the letter addressed to the Secretary Treasurer and Superintendent dated the fifteenth of March two thousand and twenty-two is hereby adopted. And number two, this bylaw may be cited as school district number thirty-eight Richmond, capital bylaw number two zero two two slash two three dash C P S D three eight dash zero one. First, I'm going to ask if I have consensus from trustees that three readings take place this evening. Okay, so just to give a nod. Thank you. Thank you very much. I see that we do have consensus. And so I'm going to ask for a mover and a seconder for our first reading. Sir Mover, trustee Goldstein, seconded by trustee Hamaguchi. And that is at the Board of Education, Richmond, approved capital bylaw number two zero two two slash two three dash C P S D three eight dash zero one. And all those in favor? Please show your hands. None opposed? That is carried. And so can I get a mover and seconder for a second reading? Trustee Sergeant, thank you. Seconded by trustee Lee. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried as well. And third and final reading, if I could get another mover and seconder. Trustee Larson and seconded by trustee Tblotney. Again, that the Board of Education, Richmond, approved capital bylaw number two zero two two slash two three dash C P S D three eight dash zero one. Final reading, final call for the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's again carried unanimously. Declare that capital bylaw number two zero two two slash two three dash C P S D three eight dash zero one is carried. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to our next item. And that is the school site acquisition charge. Some of us have too many screens and some of us have too many pieces of paper all around us here. So there's again a report from our executive director, Mr. Frank Guyer, regarding the school site acquisition charge. And there is also a recommendation, and the report's on page nineteen of your agenda package. And, Mr. Guyer, anything you would like to say before we entertain a motion?
Sure. Thank you, ma'am chair. So, so you have before you school site acquisition bylaw number twenty twenty-two dash one, which would set up the new per-unit rates to be paid by developers. And these have been calculated based on formulas and maximum set through the provincial school site acquisition regulations. So the intent of the school site acquisition charge is to raise revenue to cover up to thirty-five percent of the cost to acquire eligible school sites over a ten-year period. So you may recall that back in June twenty twenty-one, the board adopted the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three eligible school site proposal, which proposed a review of the of these rates that would be, that would then be accumulated to acquire a future city center elementary school site generally located in the vicinity of Landtown Shopping Center at an estimated cost of seventy-five million dollars. The proposal was was approved by the, was adopted by the board and then submitted along with the district's five-year capital plan to the Ministry of Education. So the proposal, it was drafted in consultation with local government, which consists of City of Richmond and Metro Vancouver Regional District, as well as developer stakeholders. And once the, once the proposal was adopted by the board, and then we submitted it to the ministry, we started discussions with these parties. And what you see on page twenty is a table showing what the current S S A C rates are versus what's proposed. Basically, across the board, it works out to about a thirty percent increase in, or about a hundred and eighty-three dollars per unit increase in what we would collect, what the city would collect on our behalf from developers for each residential, new residential unit developed. And the parties did accept, the local government did accept these rates. And when we received the letter acknowledging the submission of our eligible school site proposal from the ministry on March fifteenth, what now needs to happen is the board needs to adopt the bylaw that's contained at the end of this report in order for the new rates to take effect in sixty days, or it would be May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So what we're asking for tonight is that the board adopt or adopt this bylaw or that, sorry, that the bylaw be given three readings and adopted pursuant to the Local Government Act and School Site Acquisition Regulations.
Thank you for that background, Mr. Guyer. I see, trustee Sergeant, do you have a comment or question?
Yes, a comment. Thank you, Chair. I just want to say major thank you to you and your team, Mr. Guyer, for taking this on and getting the increase. And as a director on our provincial association, we've been really working hard on discussions at the provincial level on on raising the S S A Cs. Because we all know that the first question someone's going to ask when they move into a development is where's the school? And so developers really need to be aware that that's a huge amenity. And I know some people don't like calling a school an amenity, but it is a massive amenity, and that those schools need to be where those developments are happening. And if this can help in any way contribute to, you know, our hope with city center school, that's a really good thing. Provincially, we're advocating for more. And I know, you know, the ministry is behind it because it's dollars that we can use other places as well. So really wanted to thank you and your team. And I would move, when you're ready, the first recommendation, the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sergeant. Trustee Goldstein?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. This is really like a pointed procedure. This, this bylaw is a five-point bylaws, quite long, contains a table. I hope we have some shortened way of reading it out in full. Yeah.
Thank you very much. I will answer by saying that I was planning to, again, ask for consensus. And perhaps with trustees' agreement, we would, I would simply be reading, recommend the motion that the Board of Education approve S S A C bylaw to set the school site acquisition charge as per the details in the report. Will that be acceptable? And maybe at this point, I will ask if there's consensus. And if we can do it that way, okay, I'm seeing positive response. You're, you're right. That would take a while. And it's really a report. That would be the substance of the of the bylaw. Great. Then I believe, seeing no other questions, I believe trustee Sergeant has offered to move the first reading. As our seconder, trustee Goldstein, thank you, that the Board of Education, Richmond, approve S S A C bylaw number two zero two two dash one to set the two zero two two dash two zero two three school site acquisition charge. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. I have a mover for our second reading. Trustee Hamaguchi, seconded by trustee Tblotney. That the Board of Education, Richmond, approve S S A C bylaw number two thousand twenty-two dash one to set the two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three school site acquisition charge. All in favor? Any opposed? And that second reading is carried. Thank you. The third and final reading, do I have a mover? Trustee Larson, thank you. And a seconder? Trustee Lee, thank you. That the Board of Education, Richmond, approve S S A C bylaw number two zero two two dash one to set the two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three school site acquisition charge. And all those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. That's carried. So I would declare that S S A C bylaw number two zero two two dash one to set two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three school site acquisition charge is carried. Very much. Feels like we're moving a lot of really good work along tonight, and that feels great. And it has been the result of a lot of hard work by our team, our staff teams. And we're very grateful for that. And grateful to the ministry for for moving these projects along with the funding. So item six C is in relation to our strategic plan. And this is one of the quarterly updates in our new strategic plan. And these surround our priorities four and five. And we have a report in our agenda package. And starting on page twenty-four, I am going to turn things over to our superintendent to speak to the report.
Thank you very much, chairpersons. So just a reminder to trustees that the reports that are coming forward this evening are the part of the quarterly reporting structure on each of the strategic priorities. So trustees will likely recall that in December, staff reported on strategic priorities one and two. The next phase in that is this evening where we will be reporting on strategic priorities four and five. And then towards the end of the year, strategic three, strategic priority three will be reported on. So what we're going to be doing is starting with strategic priority four, Executive Director Buchanan will be starting, followed by Secretary Treasurer Wang. After Ms. Buchanan has spoken, I believe that we will stop and answer any questions. Then after Ms. Wang has spoken, we will stop and answer questions. And then we'll move into strategic priority five, where the Director of Communications and Marketing and I will be presenting. So with that being said, I am going to turn things over to Executive Director Buchanan, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you and good evening. And we do have a presentation that will come up that I will, and have the pleasure of presenting to you. And we are on page twenty-six of the board package for reference. You can see moving along, we've set out the progressive workplace description here. And it is intended as a comprehensive wraparound approach that recognizes the variety of ways in which we have the privilege of supporting our employees, knowing that the strength of and support for our employees translate directly into the educational experience of our students through every area and across every function of the school district. Along into goal one, inclusion, equity, and diversity are foundational to employment at every level of the school district. The steps that are outlined here, we've provided a selection for you here, including the district equity statement that you see there, the the large text near the top. That is on every job posting that we issue, both internal within the school district, external, outside the school district. That is a constant that you will see on every posting that we issue. You can see a reference here reviewing gendered language in all sorts of documentation that we generate in H R, and it is is quite a bit. And looking as well at salutation, where we utilize salutations in that documentation, ensuring that we have a broad array. So the addition of the M X salutation. This work here reflects just some of the first steps that are undertaken in this process. And we will continue on and continue to go deeper and learn more and adding to to this work, which I'm sharing here. This is intentionally and specifically a continuous process. We don't expect this area of focus to be one that is ever done. It will be continuous, and we will continue to grow and move through this area. But we're still in goal one, inclusion, equity, and diversity, and a selection of information here. As we started to undertake our work in this area, a very clear starting place was education. And we needed to ensure that our leadership team within the school district had a foundational understanding of what inclusion, equity, and diversity mean, in particular to this objective within the employment context. And you can see some of that feedback here. The attendees indicated a strong interest in learning more. And we will be including more leadership team members in future sessions and are planning specifically a session for our management group. You can see a reference there to Dale Boyle, who is part of the Safer Spaces organization. And we had a great participation in that session. And one of the takeaways from that session was the Best Practices Toolkit, which addressed a wide range of areas to examine. which addressed a wide range of areas to examine within an organization. Again, looking at inclusion, equity and diversity in employment. And we continue to utilize that toolkit and work through and make changes as as we continue to learn. And one example I'll share with you is, and it was referenced in the previous slide, is the inclusion of employment interview questions, which address inclusive practices. So an example of that, of a question that we ask in some of our interviews is, tell me about a time when you witnessed discrimination in the workplace and how did you respond? There's a variety of of samples like that that have been provided to our HR recruiters for incorporation into the various interview guides that we utilize. Moving along to goal two, professional learning, leadership and skill development for all staff. The slide you see here is a very condensed version of a pretty massive spreadsheet that we have built that identifies all of the professional learning priorities that are set out in the strategic plan. As all of you know, professional learning is fundamental to what we do as a learning organization. And it is deeply embedded in our strategic plan. Is across all of our employees and across all district functions in the school district. At the same time, we've also looked at what our historical professional learning opportunities, where have we been? How does that inform us? What has worked well for us and what do we need to continue to add on and build? We have looked at our professional learning budgets and looked at that with a lens of, are we adequately supporting all of this professional learning that is underway? And that is in the future and meeting the needs that have been again identified in the strategic plan. At the current time, we're working on our next step of developing a comprehensive leadership development plan across the district. And that includes researching other organizations that are to some degree further along in the journey and how we can learn from them and where they have been. And incorporating that specific to us again in alignment with our strategic plan. So you'll hear more about that. Moving along to goal three, employee health and well-being is valued and supported within a culture of caring. The past two years, we've been in a pandemic and have absolutely left no doubt on the importance of employee health and well-being and how fundamental it is to a school district accomplishing our mission vision within our strategic plan and supporting our people who are so integral to our student support and their well-being. Prior to the pandemic, even, we did have a variety of initiatives in place with respect to foundations of a healthy workplace. So we were well positioned and had already that experience behind us to be able to be responsive to the emergent needs that the pandemic created. You see a reference in here in a health and wellness vision. We have that finalized at the current point in time and that will undergo a regular review to ensure that it is current and reflective of our district culture and our needs. We built that vision through consultation and engagement with our union stakeholders and with the district steering committee and a variety of survey initiatives. And lastly, on this point here, you can see a logo there with the green text and the and the tree with the imagery there. And that is on all of our communications that are associated with foundations of a healthy workplace to ensure that we have that consistency across our communications. We have a communication strategy that goes into as specific as when do we communicate? To ensure that we are attracting the the eyes and the the ears of our employees. And there's a regularity to our communications. Moving along, still in goal three. You can see a selection here of survey feedback that we have gathered and seeking to understand our employees' experience with what we have offered. And looking at participation as well and looking at where the offerings that we have within a priority. As we all know, we have a finite budget within all of what we do. And we want to make sure we're using that to the greatest degree that we can. So this priority information is is very helpful. We also look at our usage data and we have the the levels of participation or how many people have accessed a vaccine clinic. It's all aggregated and anonymized. There's no personal information provided in there. And we also look at usage data as compared to cost. And we may have an offering that has a relatively low participation rate. But the cost is so effective for user that we would continue because that's met a need for an identified group. We also do have offerings which are higher per use. And we look at those and see what the participation rate and see if there's waiting lists to access some of these services. And that tells us that there's still a demand there. And that this information is crucial as we reflect each year on our plans and build our plans for the next year. Moving along to goal four, high-quality staff with growth potential are recruited and retained in all positions. And you can see in the report here, there's significant work that has already been undertaken in this area. And I would put this goal as well, like goal one, this will be continuous. And we will never have this finished because it's something that you will always continue to learn and grow and always be adapting your HR practice in response to the context that you find yourself in. A few things I'll highlight here and you can see a checklist on the right-hand side. And it's really with a goal of looking at consistency across our HR recruitment team. We have a number of people who support their recruitment function across different positions that they recruit for. But having a common and seamless approach is very effective to ensuring that some of those bumps along the road that can happen in the recruitment process that you try and fill those gaps. So things don't get dropped, the communication is smooth. And again, you have consistency across the teams. And part of that is doing some documentation on the ways in which we do this. You can see on the training opportunities on the top left there. We have set an expectation across our HR recruiters that every person participates in at least one professional learning session each calendar year. For this year, we have almost everyone who has already done that and we're in March and some have done too already. And we've created a tracking spreadsheet for that learning, looking at what people are participating in and asking them upon and participating, what are their reflections, what have they learned? And to identify what are some action items that they're going to take away and implement from that learning. Moving along, we're still in goal four. And I can tell you, you can see some survey information. And I cannot tell you how proud I am to share this with you. This is directly from our recent hires into our school district to understand what is working well in our recruitment processes and of course, where we can improve. We know that the hiring process is so integral in connecting with our employees and setting them on a great path for connection, engagement with us as their employer. Our HR recruitment team puts a significant amount of energy into this. And and I think the the survey here certainly shows that it's working and we're getting that that feedback there. Some of the other work and it is not highlighted on here, but is looking at our online presence as an employer. We have identified a number of gaps that we are working to fill, ensuring that we have that presence and promotion of our district as a great place to work. Including on our to-do list is making application to be named one of BC's top employers. And I hope perhaps this time next year, I'll be in front of you and I'll be sharing that we have made that list. And so that's upcoming. And moving along to goal five, and I'm I'm running out of time. So I'll be I'll be brief here. This goal is one that we are in the earlier stages of. And I'll highlight that we are in the process of information gathering and researching. And what we are finding is looking at neighboring school districts. Not many have ventured into this area. And so it is an area that we are we are leading through. And so we want to make sure that we are proceeding slowly and carefully, ensuring we are gathering good information and then exploring what some options may be. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you the great work that the HR team has underway. I'm very, very grateful to work within and have the opportunity to support an amazing HR team. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Buchanan. A lot of a lot of really good information. Appreciate the detail on what what we've been offering for staff and where we're heading. And I particularly appreciated seeing some of those comments, some of the feedback from from prospective employees who've gone through the through the process. Trustee Hamaguchi?
I'm sorry, just commenting on the process. I really like the fact that we're using a lot of objective data to to validate what we're doing and to demonstrate that, you know, things are working well. You know, it's really easy to say, well, we'll try this, we'll try that. But if you don't really measure it, you don't really know what you have. And so hats off for doing a very good job of making sure that we're, you know, we're getting results from the work that you folks are putting in. And it seems to be looking really well. And thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thanks, trustee Hamaguchi. Trustee Sergeant?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Buchanan. I mean, the the work is really, really good. And it's really a journey that we're beginning. And I was, I've been always proud of our HR practices. And, you know, our reputation has always been at very high level within within the system about, you know, you want to come and work in Richmond because, you know, you'll be very well respected and supported. But to see us go even further and just keep getting better, I think is really great. And I really, to Superintendent Robinson, I really appreciate the the reports back. Because we took a lot of time writing a strategic plan. And I think the transparency and the commitment by reporting back, especially to the public. You know, and not everybody watches the board meetings, but if they want to, they can. And it just reaffirms the work. And it's very open and transparent. And I really, really appreciate that. And and I'm happy that we have that follow-through, that circle back. And I look forward to continuing that work next year and to see where we are. And it'll be really interesting to see Ms. Buchanan, you know, your your dreams and where you'd like to take it even further. So really appreciate the work and appreciate the reporting back. And please say thank you to the team because we've had a hard two years. And I think supporting our employees through good wellness and HR practices is where we need to be. So thank you very much for that.
Thanks, trustee Sergeant. Trustee to Blatton?
Yes. I want to echo trustee sergeant's comments. You know, a number of years ago, you know, we would talk about these things, but they weren't the focus and they weren't measured like they are now. And and I'm so appreciative. And I think, you know, we will reap the rewards. Our employees will reap the rewards. And the students will will also reap the rewards from this initiative. And I did have a comment from someone who applied to our district. And they were just so amazed at our hiring process and how professional and organized and ethical it was. And I was really happy to get that comment because we've worked really hard on this and together. So great job and it's good, great presentation. Thank you.
Trustee Larson?
Just a real quick comment. One of the, this has been just amazing what you have presented to us. But one of the things that that really sticks with me, and I'm not quite sure why. But right from the beginning, it's like you're setting up an opportunity for belonging and connection. That, you know, interview styles and all of those things, you know, we we can, there's there's more than that. And I I think you've created this amazing, you've all, your department and what have you, through the strategic plan and stakeholders, whatever. But you've put that together. And I think when you have a sense of belonging somewhere, you you, your heart and soul becomes a part of it. And I I really felt that through your presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Larson. I think those are the comments, so we could move on.
Great, thank you, Chairperson. So I would ask Secretary Treasurer Wang now to present her report, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Robinson. So I do appreciate the opportunity here to provide a quarterly update on strategic priority four and goal six. The written report is on page twenty-four and twenty-five of the public board meeting package. So the district has engaged PWC to conduct a enterprise risk management review to formally identify and document significant risks at the enterprise level. Next slide, please. So first, why do we need to do a ERM review? The ERM review process is driven by our strategic plan that the district should have effective risk management policies and practices in place to ensure safety and stability. So this process is also to align with a recommendation made by the Auditor General suggesting all school districts in BC should conduct a ERM assessment. So the purpose of the ERM review is to identify those potential events that may occur and may hinder our ability to achieve our strategic objectives. So the process is to support the district to achieve our objectives by considering risks and also by actively managing the collective impact of those risks. At the end of the process, our objective is to build a systematic and also a proactive proactive approach to manage the risks in our system. So some examples for risks, what are we talking about? Risks may look differently when when we're looking at different departments and I look at a different levels of the organization. So risks can be financial, can be reputational, operational, legal or technical. Well-managed risks, they can create opportunities for us. Poorly managed risks, they can lead to unintended consequences. So that's a overview of the whole project. And next slide, please. Through the ERM review process from engagement with PWC from December to March, they have led a series of fourteen workshops for seven areas of the district, which provided tremendous learning opportunities for the participants. And I also just wanted to say thank you here to every participant that your commitment through the process is very much appreciated. So these seven groups include the Board of Trustees, a senior management team, HR and finance, facility services, learning services, technology and communications, marketing and international education. So every group has reviewed the definition of the enterprise risk management independently assessed and analyzed the different types of risks and risk drivers. Prioritize the risks by looking at the impact and also likelihood of those risk events. Every group evaluated their existing mitigation strategies and also discussed additional treatment options if needed. So that's the process. The field work has been completed. PWC is currently working on the final report, which will be provided to the board before the end of the school year. Today's presentation is based on PWC's preliminary findings as a result of the ERM review process. There could be some minor differences between this version and the final final report. So on the next slide, through the ERM exercise, every group has was able to create a risk assessment matrix, or we call it heat map in the risk management field. Where we, each group applauded specific risk, identified the risks and plotted them on a heat map according to the impact and likelihood of those risk events happening. And all of those risk events are also mapped and also linked to a specific specific strategic priority areas. So on the next slide. Based on the preliminary findings of the ERM assessment, the top risks identified by senior management and the board include substantial and ongoing decrease in international student enrollment. Some policies do not reflect current practices and requirements. Staff recruitment and retention across the district, including specialized roles. Ministry of of Education could potentially stop support the Richmond project team. So those are the risks identified by different areas. And those are the themes across the district. And also on this slide, on the second table, on the second table, you can see some of the top risks identified by the departments are related to mainly school facilities and also technology facilities. So based on these preliminary So based on these preliminary findings, overall eighty-two risks were identified, assessed, and evaluated. So the numbers may seem to be high here, but it's very common for a public sector organization to identify everything in the operations of our organization in the first round of the ERM review process. And we can see the majority of the risks are related to specific operation areas in the organization. And they're related to specific operation, operations, for example, facilities or technology services. So it is important to recognize that the ERM process is a journey. We just started this process. This work here that I'm talking about is basically the first step of the whole district's ERM program. So as we mature in the ERM program, by building a regular monitoring and risk reporting cycle, we should be able to see many of these identified risks will be downgraded to a department, department level or operational level risks instead of, you know, building these risk events and building these strategies into our regular control procedures rather than talking or identifying these as enterprise risks. So ninety-one percent of the risks are related to three of the five strategic priorities. And specifically, they are relating to facilities, technologies, workplace, and connecting with the community. So on to the next slide. In PWC's final report, they will make recommendation that the district should formalize a ERM review or ERM program structure to make sure there's a continued effort to maintain the ERM process or ERM function in the, in the school district. Ultimately, the Board of Education is responsible for providing oversight and overall direction on the effective risk management structure. And have the, have the expectation of building a risk management culture throughout the organization. And the next layer is the superintendent, who is responsible for making sure the risks are considered and risk management policies and procedures are in place. The next layer is the Secretary Treasurer, who is a key facilitator and also provides the support to the leadership team in designing and executing the ERM framework. And at the end is the risk owners. They will be identified through the process according to the risk assessment matrix or heat map. So these are the leaders in the organization or management, key management staff in the organization to be able to design and execute risk control procedures and execute those plans. So on to the next slide. The PWC will also provide recommendations for some quick wins and also in the medium and long-term initiatives. So the planning work right now is underway, informed by the upcoming final report. The district will formalize the ERM process, assign individual risks, risk owners, and also adopt a regular risk, a reporting cycle for ongoing risk assessment and monitoring. So research is also underway in terms of how to update the relevant policies and procedures as part of the ERM framework. The effort, of course, will focusing on those high risks that are currently don't have sufficient mitigation strategies. So with that, it comes to the end of my report. And I'm happy to answer any questions or you may provide your comments here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. I see, I see one trustee has a question. Trusty Goldstein?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Madam Secretary Treasurer, thank you very, very much for your detailed reports. It's very impressive. And I have to say, as, as Chair of the Audit Committee, I've been very impressed with the, with the work done by, by your team and cooperation, collaboration with our consultants, PWC, on, on getting our district moving forward in these important considerations, understanding risks and how to take care of them. So thank you very much. Work well done.
Thank you, Trusty Goldstein. That's an important piece of our work. And as you say, we, we, as you, I'll just echo your thanks to everyone who is participating in, in this particular initiative. We have more on this, on this item, is that right, Superintendent?
We do, Chairperson. Now, what we'd like to do is move on to strategic priority five now. So I'll just wait for the presentation. Go. So set up again. So if we can just move on to the first slide, thank you very much. Perfect. So the Director of Communications and Marketing and I will be presenting on strategic priority five this evening. And this speaks to the notion of a connected learning community. You can see the exact language there that's embedded in the strategic plan. We'll be speaking to the goals and objectives, which are part of the operational plan for the current school year. There are other areas within the priority that we will not be talking to this evening that obviously would form up a part of future years' operational plans. I'm going to turn things over to Director Sadler, who will speak to the first two goal areas regarding the external and internal communication practices. And then I will speak to the third goal area, which contemplates student voice. And then once I'm done, we'd both be happy to respond to any questions. So Director Sadler, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Robinson. Good evening, everyone. Referring to page thirty-three of the agenda, strategic priority five, goal one states that external communication practices will effectively serve and inform the public. And objective one states that the district will develop communication guidelines and a design standards document. The district has now developed an internal brand guidelines document with input from stakeholders. This resource outlines best practices and provides clear guidance to staff when creating documents and presentations. Accompanying the internal brand guidelines is a set of template files that staff will be able to use for developing district documents and presentations. These templates utilize defined district fonts and colors while maintaining a consistent look and feel across all files. The development and future implementation of these resources will support the delivery of clear, consistent and effective messaging throughout the district. Next slide, please. Remaining on page thirty-three of the agenda, goal one, objective two states that the district will utilize analytics to improve district and school websites to enhance the user experience. Analytics has now been implemented to analyze district websites, school websites, and social media platforms, including Facebook, Twitter, and WeChat. Analytic data provides information on visitor traffic, how visitors interact with the websites, what information they are seeking, and what information they are not interested in. As a result, the district is better equipped to optimize content, improve navigation, and meet the needs of visitors. Weekly, monthly, and yearly reporting templates have also been developed to summarize data related to district websites, school websites, and social media channels. These measurement reports analyze, evaluate, and summarize performance over time. Additionally, to improve school communication and support school administrators, website upgrades have been implemented across the district. Enhancements to the user interface, content organization, page layouts, navigation, and content editing tools were made in response to feedback that was provided by staff. These updates support school administrators with more efficient ways to communicate with parents through the school website. Next slide, please. Referring to page thirty-five of the agenda, goal two states that internal communication practices effectively improve collaboration and productivity. And objective one states that the district will complete a comprehensive internet review and implement improvements to internal communications. I'm happy to report that the district recently completed a comprehensive internet review. The consultation process was designed to inform a clear understanding of the district's current internet ecosystem. District staff provided feedback through surveys, focus groups, and interviews. Feedback from staff was documented and analyzed to better understand what is required and expected as the district moves towards implementing a new internet. Next slide, please. Moving to page thirty-six of the agenda, goal two, objective two states that the district will implement, train, and support a district-wide platform that effectively delivers communications while promoting collaboration and connection. To date, the appropriate business technology and communication staff have been identified and will receive training in SharePoint online by June twenty-twenty-two. Content managers for various departments have been identified and are currently engaged in the development of navigation and content creation for a new internet. Moving forward, strategic governance and functional content plans will be implemented to ensure the proper management and delivery of a new district internet. I will now turn the presentation back to Superintendent Robinson.
Great. Thanks very much, Director Sadler, for, for that portion of the presentation. And now I'm going to speak to goal three. And the need for this goal area really came through loud and clear when the board began its consultation on the strategic plan by speaking with students. And at that time, students across the district told us that they wanted to have a stronger voice in how decisions that impact their experiences at school are made. So just for reference, I'm starting on page thirty-six of the board package, and I'm about halfway down the page. So goal three talks about how our students' voices and perspectives will be valued, encouraged, and embedded. And objective one talks about creating a variety of ongoing opportunities to activate student voice. So the first action item that we looked at there was to create a working group of students. And that has happened. A group of approximately twenty-five students from grade seven to twelve has been established. They met several times with the guidance of our district administrator of student voice and leadership, Mr. Jim Allison, who is on the call this evening. And I believe to date, the group's focus has really been on defining student voice and agency as well as beginning to define the working group's priorities. So if I can get the next slide, please. As you can see, the group has developed a graphic organizer of defining student voice and agency. And you can see that the group has spent considerable time defining what student voice really means to them, as well as the difference between having a voice and also having more agency or control over how they learn. So I suspect this organizer will see its way around the district in the coming months and help form the basis of more discussion in schools. Because what we're trying to do is have the work of the working group filter out not only the district level, but each of the schools in our district. So the next meeting of the working group, my understanding is the group will be engaged in a discussion with the district principal of diversity, equity, and inclusion to identify how student voice can support diversity and personal identity across the district. So hopefully, what you're starting to see here is the integration between the different areas within the strategic plan. So the next action item was to identify and review existing student platforms and to establish additional platforms and means to activate student voice. So we have a number of existing platforms that have been identified. So we've, as I just spoke to, we've got the district student voice working group. We have a SOJI Youth Advisory Group. We have Rainbow Cafes and Rainbow Network, Mental Health Use Advisory Group, Equity Diversity Inclusion Advisory Group, Student Councils, Table Thirty-eight, just a whole number of mechanisms in place where students have the ability to provide voice. Our goal is to expand this and make sure that it's happening across the district in, in all schools. We've had some great examples of, of new groups starting recently. So one is a Burnett Secondary User Voice Student Group has newly formed. It's not a comprehensive list, what I've shared, but it should give trustees an idea as to the breadth, the type of structures in place to give students voice. Couple other examples of when students have been given a chance to state their opinion. In nineteen-twenty, obviously, students across the district were invited to provide into, input into the strategic plan. And I think we, we can recognize that ultimately, student voice provided the basis of several areas of the plan. More recently, the district surveyed all secondary students regarding schedules for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And student voice will form a significant part of the decision-making process and the outcome. So now moving to the top of page thirty-seven. And the third action item was to identify different groups of students and the best ways and means to connect with them. So we have got a number of specific youth advisory groups that are intended to engage student voice from a wide variety of different student groups that exist across the district. This includes Indigenous Student Connections through the Indigenous Support Team, International Student Connections, Unity Clubs, which connects students and youth with additional needs, as well as SOJI Youth Advisory Group and the Mental Health Advisory Group, which I referred to earlier. So what we'll be continuing to do is to make sure that we are, we're really looking to engage with students of all kinds of different profiles across the district and not just what we might consider to be a sort of stereotype of a leadership student. The next item was to develop a high-level framework for the executive team to ensure that student voice is used in planning. And what we've discovered is that this is happening already, a number of different initiatives at the district level, being led by executive team are currently engaging students. And we are hoping that this will become much more enshrined in our day-to-day work. And then the last item for this objective was to identify, design, and deliver professional learning opportunities regarding student engagement. So a couple examples of this, recently at the district conference, student voice and agency was highlighted and co-facilitated in a session by students. Session was attended by teachers, support staff, administrators. I heard very, very positive feedback about it. Students from the SOJI Youth Advisory Council have been presenting at different schools. I believe they also presented at a support staff session. And believe this models how student voice can be incorporated into professional learning. Presentations on how to engage student voice at the school level have been provided by the district administrator at elementary and secondary admin meetings. So we're really trying hard to make sure that the work at the district level is filtering, as I said, to all schools. So I just wanted to point out the image there at the top, which is posters that are at Richmond Secondary right now. It's a new initiative where, and you can see at the bottom there, a way that kids can connect directly by using a QR code to express their voice over different topics. So just one small example of this is student-driven. This is student voice at its best. It was not created by staff. So objective two, increase engagement and collaboration between student, staff, and trustees. I spoke to the first action item already, which was creating a working group. The second action item is to identify and review existing opportunities for collaboration, in particular with students and trustees. So I'll focus a little bit on a couple of the things that are happening. Currently, the primary opportunity for collaboration between students and trustees is the Board of Education Activating Student Voice Event. We used to call this Junior Board. And this annual event provides an opportunity for trustees to meet with students and engage in discussion. It's an annual event. And what we're trying to do is build in a much more regular a set of opportunities for trustees to engage with a variety of students so that trustees can hear directly from students about what it is they want to see happening in the district. Obviously, we are working on other less formal opportunities. And so we're also currently in the process of setting up an opportunity for trustees to meet with the actual student voice working group. And our hope is that that meeting will focus on identifying ways that trustees can hear more directly from students throughout the school year. So that concludes our presentation. Before I move to questions, I did want to acknowledge the work that's being done by the student working group. You've heard throughout this evening, we have a number of groups of employees and students across the district who are hard at work on different initiatives. And this is a great example of that. I also want to thank Mr. Jim Allison, who works alongside this group. I have to say that they have undertaken their work with great enthusiasm, a definite sense of purpose. And they are to be commended for taking their role so seriously. So Chairperson, at this time, we are happy to respond to any questions, questions that trustees might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I might go out on a limb and say there may be more enthusiastic comments than questions, but it's just a guess here. Trusty Sergeant?
Yeah, a comment and a question. Enthusiastic. Just, you know, it's so inspiring when you think about, we're, we were in a pandemic. Superintendent Robinson? Superintendent Robinson, and all this work was happening. It's really inspiring, and it's really student-focused. All the presentations tonight were on top of trying to work through everything with pandemic, and it's very impressive. And on that note, I'm just wondering if there was opportunities to speak to kids in a real heartfelt, meaningful way, what the two years has been like for them? And, you know, maybe around three questions, what did we learn? What can we do different? You are all the professionals, but really having that, just that moment before the end of the school year about what was it like and, you know, what else do you need to start in September? I'd be really interested in really hearing, and maybe you've already had that discussion, but that would be something I'd want to hear. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. If I could respond to that, I appreciate your comments, Trustee Sergeant. And I know those conversations are happening informally in many schools, but I also certainly agree with you that to have some information at the district level that really tells us a pattern of what students have experienced and what it is they need from us would be useful. So I appreciate that suggestion. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Tablatney.
Yes, I well, it's really interesting to hear, you know, how much we've been doing to to connect with our students and to give them opportunities to to share with us their experiences and their thoughts and and their desires for learning and 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 interacting. I noted that you mentioned the Mental Health Advisory Group. Can you tell me a bit more about that group? And so I'm assuming we have students sitting on that group. Is it comprised of students or how is that working?
Yeah, thanks very much, Chairperson. I'm happy to respond to that. What I have is some notes in front of me because I was not directly involved in this, but I'll be happy to do my best, and then we're happy to provide some additional information. So from October twenty twenty to May of twenty twenty-one, a twelve-student youth group was involved that was called the Agenda Gap Project. And there was a lot of dialogue and recommendations made by a group of Richmond students who went through this process. And the focus of the dialogue was really to co-create ideas and actions that would promote intergenerational dialogue and literacy on youth mental health. And what we are very happy to do at some point is bring forward a presentation for the trustees to learn a little bit more about what students learned and what the students told us. My understanding is that the advisory group has been continued on for the twenty-twenty-one school or twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year with a focus on adolescent mental health. As we all know, that has been impacted dramatically by the pandemic. So there have been a number of presentations made in Career Life Education, Physical Health Education regarding this that has been driven by some of the conversations by this youth advisory, mental health group. So that's the information that I have. I apologize that I can't give you any more details than that, but we would certainly be happy to provide some additional information at a trustee board meeting on some of these other youth-based groups that we've got going on in the school district.
Yes, I, I, I'm really would be very interested in hearing those things and having the presentations. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Chairperson, I wonder if I might ask Mr. Allison just to comment briefly on his work with the Youth Advisory Working Group. He's the one who has been alongside them, and I'm very grateful for the work that he's been doing with them.
That would be great.
Oh, hello, everyone. Thanks, Mr. Robinson. Yeah, working with students, it's always insightful. They're always provocative, and they have a lot to say. And what's most fascinating is that they understand that student voice, they don't want to run the school. They want to be a part of the decision-making process. And we already know that we have many clubs and incredibly focused, responsible kids in all of our schools and tremendous leaders. I think what we're trying to do is shift the concept of voice so that all students have a voice and all students have agency in their learning. And that is, not only is that attached to Strategic Priority Five, a connected learning community, but I think it's directly connected to Strategic Priority One, which is inspired learners. So every time I would meet with these kids, throughout my career, it's always, wow, that's really insightful. Wow, that's a really good idea, and that's a powerful thing to hear. So it's been enjoyable working with them. When we did a little presentation at the district conference day, the two students have facilitated. We met beforehand, and I think we had about twenty-five slides, and I was going to do about twelve of them. After we rehearsed, I realized that they were way more articulate and thoughtful than I was. And quite, I think, quite ironically, if it's about student voice, we should let the student speak. And so I did two slides, and they did the other twenty-three, and everybody appreciated that, I think. So it's been a pleasure to work with, and the kids in all classrooms all over the district, if given the opportunity and the structure from caring adults, they have a lot to offer.
Thanks very much, Mr. Allison.
And we, the group meets again, the group is meeting again Friday afternoon at Richmond High, three-thirty. So in person, we're quite happy.
Right, I was just thinking that maybe most of this has been taking place online so far. So the student voice working group is, how do you, how do you find students for that? And I'm just curious about the relationship or what's different between that and Table Thirty-Eight, which I know has been established for a long time.
That's a really good question. When I talked to Mr. Rob, Superintendent Robinson about that, we wanted to make sure the group was diverse. So I reached out to school principals, and I said, this is what I'm, I'm not going to tell you what kind of a student, but perhaps not necessarily your student council president. Someone who's thoughtful, has something to say, and is willing to attend meetings on a reasonably regular basis. And so, you know, kids are busy, and kids with lots to say are usually, they're involved in many things because they have a lot of interests and passions. So we've had, we've got two students from each secondary school and five elementary students who are groups, both twenty-five people, not too big, just the right amount, and it's been fantastic.
That's helpful. Well, the board would really appreciate if if we were able to set up some kind of opportunity to hear from or interact with and engage with those students. That would be, that would be a great opportunity for us.
I believe we're trying to set that up for May, in May. We're looking forward to it.
Wonderful, thanks.
So Chairperson, that concludes the strategic plan reports this evening. I really want to thank the trustees for your attention. I know it's been a long haul here and lots of information. There's a lot of great things going on in the school district, and I really want to acknowledge the work of staff in schools at the district level and departments. I have to say that every day I am amazed by what happens for kids alongside kids, and as Trustee Sergeant pointed out, it's been a rough couple of years, and no one has used as an excuse to not keep moving forward with all these wonderful things that you've heard about tonight. So I'm a superintendent, and I'm grateful for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Trustee Goldstein?
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, tonight's reports and also previous reports on the strategic plan have really knocked at home for me how committed we are as a district to our district plan, to see it through. And I have to say, from past past times, and maybe stories from other districts as well, it's not always like this. Sometimes the strategic plan sort of gathers dust on a shelf, even electronically. But that's certainly not the case here, and it's very, I'm very happy to see that.
Thank you for your comments, Trustee Goldstein. Lots of great information, and it is, it is, these quarterly reports, I think, are so substantial for a good reason, because there's a lot to share, and we can, we can hear and feel the dedication of staff working in all these different areas and in wanting to share what, all the work that's happening. And so we're really grateful that you also are taking the time to put this, put these presentations together for us, on top of the doing of the work. So thank you again, and I'm conscious that, that we have been going for two hours. And I know trustees are very diligent with staying front and center in your screens and staying present to, to all of the business that we're attending to. So I'm going to suggest that we take a five-minute stretch break and, and come back. And thank you all for your, for your patience on that. Okay, thank you, everyone, for your patience with a bit of a break there. It's a long evening on Zoom, and I'm grateful that this may be trustees' last meeting on Zoom. So we're going to continue with our agenda, and the next item is actually our second period for questions from the public. I don't see any, but I will just check for staff or give panelists who are attending tonight a opportunity to turn on their screen or raise a hand, let us know that you have a question. I'm not seeing any, but I'll just check with our senior team. Nope. Okay. Then we are going to move on to our standing committee reports. Audit Committee, trustee Goldstein.
Madam Chair, our next meeting will be on Monday, May 9.
Okay, thank you. Education Committee, trustee Larson.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, April 20 at 6:00 P. M.
Thank you very much. Facilities and Building Committee, trustee Hamaguchi.
I'm muted. There we go. A few things. Number one, the minutes of meeting health every second 2022 are attached. Meeting was held on March 2, 2022. Next meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April 6, 2022 at 4:30. I also have a recommendation from our last F and B meeting. And what I'd like to do is make a few comments and then actually have our executive director Frank Guyer say a few words before I make the recommendation. Recommendation is regarding the proposed classroom ventilation program. We began discussion of this topic back in early February. Frank and his team brought up for a plan to retrofit a number of our older schools with a mechanical ventilation system cost of, at that time, 14 million, but I think that's been changed anyways. Since then, we've had a great deal of discussion. Couple of issues have come out, which I'd like to address, and I'll ask Mr. Guyer to do so. Couple, that being the idea that if we commit this amount of money to the mechanical ventilation, that it will affect in a negative way our seismic projects, funding from the government. And secondly, the issue of the money in our capital fund being put aside for the purchase of property for a new city center school. And, you know, what will the impact be if we go ahead with the plan to use, you know, a good chunk of the money for the mechanical ventilation? So, Mr. Guyer, if you could just say a few things and add anything to what I've added, that'd be great. Much appreciated.
Thank you, trustee Hamaguchi, through the chair. To answer the first question, staff don't believe that proceeding with this program using our local capital reserves will have any negative impact on future seismic upgrades. In fact, we believe it might even enhance our ability to get more projects. One of the schools that's included in this program is Dixon Elementary, and we just got approval from the ministry for a seismic upgrade there. So they, if this program were to go ahead, we'd be looking at synchronizing the two programs. This is the sort of thing, these are the sort of partnerships that the Ministry of Education actually loves to see. The second question, the money that's in this local capital reserve right now, the intent of this money is to is to use it for, basically to improve our capital assets, whether it's an improvement by enhancing existing buildings or if it's expanding buildings or contributing towards expansion of buildings in the future. Our take on it is that, right now, we've got the money, and air quality needs to be addressed now for today's staff and students. And we can't, this could take, this could take many, many years if we wait for, if we were to wait for for government through its limited capital programs to fund this work. So what we're looking at is that we don't know exactly when we will be needing a new school in the city center area. We can't even find a property. And when the time comes that we are able, that basically we've got the need, it's identified, supported by the ministry, the expectation is we contribute whatever we can in the way of finances, and government would make up the difference. So that is, so that's why we believe that this program is important now. These buildings that we have, these schools aren't going anywhere. And this is a great opportunity to to address a problem that that really was in the background. It really brought to the forefront with the COVID pandemic.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else you want to add to your recommendation?
No, not really. We're, you know, we've gone through, we've gone through consultation, we've heard from stakeholders. We're currently doing peer reviews using a third-party engineer to to confirm our, the strategy that we're proposing. And if the board provides the approval to proceed, we'll be, we'll be moving ahead very quickly. And we're trying, the goal is, this is a maximum cost, we're talking about $12 million. And again, I refer back to the Dixon project. If we can, if we can synchronize this work with other capital projects, the cost will come down because we're not going to be looking at two mobilizations. We're going to be looking at, if we have to open up a wall for seismic and then open it up again for for an HVAC upgrade, this way we could do it together and save money. So our goal is that, should the board approve this project, our goal is to come well beneath this maximum. This is, what we're proposing is a worst-case scenario financially, but our goal is to find, to look under every rock and stone that we can find to be able to bring the price down and be able to put money back into our into our pockets by the time the project's finished.
All right. Thank you very much. I would like to make the motion. I'd like to move that the Richmond Board of Education approved the Facilities and Buildings Committee recommendation to proceed with the proposed classroom ventilation program as presented to a maximum cost of 12 million funded from the local capital reserve.
Hey, thank you, trustee Hamaguchi. Justie Goldstein, are you seconding that? Okay, thank you. So motions on the floor. Any questions or comments by trustees? Trustee Sergeant?
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, I've spoken a fair amount about this, and I've given it an intense amount of thinking. And if you indulge me, I just have, you know, a few comments to make. I think the most important thing is for for a board to make sure their facilities are safe and for our students and staff. And the discussion we're having around ventilation, to me, is the question is, who is going to pay for that? And in our planning for LRFP and capital plans and our extensive discussions with our community and stakeholders, our key capital priorities were and continue to still be a school for city center and seismic remediation. This board and past boards advocated hard, and we're very happy to receive funding for our project office. We were seeing projects happening often. For three years, we have not seen any. I was happy to hear about the recent announcement of two projects, and I am very thankful. But we have over 20 more to do. The board contributed to these projects, and I worry about how we will continue, how we will contribute in the future. And with all due respect to our staff, I do believe it is either seismic or ventilation. Money is the money. Finding a site for a very much-needed city center school has been a very difficult project. I believe strongly the board needs to do whatever they can to ensure the students that move into city center have a school to go to and will not be bused to further away schools. Our belief in neighborhood schools needs to be there for those students, too. We are currently in discussions regarding a potential site, and using this funding may hinder this goal further. And again, I respect staff's opinion, but I do think the reason why we sold Stevenson to get the money was because we were told we had to contribute from the ministry. I believe it is the responsibility of the ministry to fund appropriate ventilation for our buildings. AFG funding has been inadequate for many years, and it needs to be increased, and we need to continue to advocate for that. I am very pleased to hear of a couple of secondary ventilation projects, but I am very disappointed the ministry did not fund any elementary for us, and I'm wondering why that is. There is currently provincial advocacy happening around ventilation, and I think we need to strongly get behind that work. Is it appropriate just because we have some money? What about other districts? Precedent setting is important to think about. We have been very open and transparent about our plans with capital surplus, with our public and with Ministry of Education. It is important for a board to be flexible and pivot if needed. I do not believe this is the time. Keep focused on our two key priorities with our dollars, city center and seismic, and go hard on both of them. I unfortunately will not be supporting the recommendation, but I wanted to say a heartfelt thanks to staff who have really tried to, you know, make ventilation in our schools a safer place to be, and I really, really appreciate that. And, you know, the the information that you have compiled will will be an awesome legacy for us to continue to advocate for what we need. So again, the question isn't about whether it's important or not, it's about, it's about who's going to pay for it. And I do not believe that we should be paying for ventilation upgrades, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes to advocate to make sure that we have adequate, not only ventilation, but adequate buildings for the students. So thank you very much for indulging me, and thank you again to staff for answering all my questions. And I look forward to the AGM, where I will definitely be standing strong to make sure that the ministry hears what we're trying to do across the province. Thank you.
Trustee Sergeant, trustee Larson.
Thank you. From the first time that Mr. Guyer presented this program to Facilities and Building, he provided a very rich amount of information for us all. And I I left feeling that I had really learned something that that, and I really respected that. And since then, every meeting we've had where this has been discussed, we've had even more information presented to us, not only from Mr. Guyer, pardon me, Director Guyer, but from the president of the RDPA, speaking on behalf of the families, our RTA president, who spoke on behalf of the teachers and very wisely made the comment that the children are the ones that don't have a voice. And right now, it's been proven that we teach better in when we're breathing good air, and we learn better when we're breathing good air. And I understand about the future in 10, 12 years, whatever it may be, for a school in city center. But this is something we need to do now, because we don't know what's going to happen in 10 or 12 years. So I am 100% for this program, and I I cannot, I don't have a, I can't say enough how everybody has come together and the thoughtfulness that has been put into this to present us with information that we can understand and make our decisions, whatever they are. And I appreciate that greatly. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Larson. Trustee Tabatney.
Well, I've got lots of comments. It's been, you know, considerably long history with the sale of Stevenson. And at one point, when we did realize that Stevenson was surplus to our needs, and the student populations were amalgamated into London, and and there was an addition onto London. It was, it was a long process, but the land became surplus, and and then the school kind of, it became dilapidated, and we were not allowed to sell it. I mean, the ministry wasn't letting us sell it. They were hanging on to it. And people in the community weren't happy with that. So we, as trustees, advocated to be able to dispose of the property and use it for something else. And in the end, we were successful, and the ministry changed her mind, allowed us to sell it. And we thought that would get us our city center school. However, you know, it took us a long time in our negotiations, and during that long time and pursued a property that was not available, those funds, you know, have been depleted. And but we did have the fun sitting there when we were doing seismic upgrades and looking for extras. And that's where that money came in. Ministry has always eyed the money that came from the sale of Stevenson. And so any extras that were needed, any upgrades that that could be done while we were getting seismic projects, the ministry wanted us to kick the funds in, you know. So at this point, due to, you know, the long wait and the cost of rising costs of of land and and materials and labor, those funds are no longer going to provide us with a city center school. It's going to go back to the ministry. And, you know, I do believe that the ministry should be upgrading ventilation and providing seismic upgrades as well as, you know, improvements and additions. But we all know that's been a long history. And I'm thankful that we've moved ahead with our projects. And one of the ways we were able to move ahead was to use that, that bit of money we had, so to get the extras while we were doing seismic upgrades. So we now have a pretty good relationship with the ministry, and and we're moving ahead on our projects. And but I do believe that air quality is important for learning, extremely important for learning. And our staff and our stakeholders and our parents have asked for improved ventilation, especially since COVID, but even before. And I just, I think this is a really good use of that money that is not going to get us our city center school. And when we need the city center school and we have the, you know, the property, the ministry is going to have to pony up, because we won't have that money sitting there anymore, and they won't be able to ask us for it. So I think, I think the money has gone to good use. It's provided the extras that the board has looked for, and I do believe that it will provide good ventilation for our students and our, you know, improve our buildings and our air quality and the working conditions for our staff. So I wholeheartedly support this. We've had many presentations, and it's all been, you know, very detailed. So I I have no qualms about spending this money on on the ventilation and approving this this recommendation today. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Tabatney. Trustee Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Frank Guyer over what I've seen him done for our school district on facilities over the last three years. I was tonight so impressed again when a question was put to him, asking him if we were to spend our own money on a project like the one we're talking about now, would we not then start to receive less money from the provincial government? And he said exactly the opposite. He said, no. By doing this, spending this, our own money on ventilation, our school district, in his opinion, will get more projects approved by that provincial government, and I totally agree with him. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lee. Are there any further comments from trustees? I had one question for you. I had one question for you, Mr. Guyer, and that is, it came up after reading an article that just came out a few days ago about a study and where they found that depending on that ventilation absolutely and air exchange absolutely impacted the risk of, of spread of airborne disease. And we know there are other reasons as well that air quality is important for our students and our staff. But in terms of actually just our, our current world situation and what we're front and foremost, first and foremost concerned about in terms of ventilation right now. You know, it seemed that the, the number of air exchange, full air exchanges per hour impacted the, the risk. And the more, obviously the more times the air got exchanged per hour with these systems, the, the less risk there was. And they were quoting, you know, two and a half, four, six time, six times an hour. Do you know what our current ventilation systems and what the new proposed ventilation systems would be, what their capacity is for that?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So right now, our, our current systems meet ASHRAE standards, National ASHRAE. I'm not going to go into what that acronym stands for, but it's an international standard for heating and air conditioning in our schools. And right now, our current systems currently meet or exceed the requirements. What that's, I read that study that, that you've referenced and it said that if you, if, I believe that it's, if it's more than two point three air changes per hour that supports the healthier environment. The food, the, our, our existing systems do upwards of six to ten air changes an hour depending on the room and the room usage. And the units that we're proposing fit that same criteria. We're, we'd be looking at roughly six to eight air changes per hour. And that, and then the difference between these air changes and what the, the current, we have some temporary purifiers in those rooms. The purifiers do about two and a half air change, they, they don't do air changes per hour because you're not changing your outs, your inside air with outside air. You're basically filtering through and the cycle is every two and a half times an hour. It cycles the air through a filter and blows it back out. What we're proposing is, is a system where you'd be bringing in clean outside air through a filter and mixing it with, with inside air. And you'd be looking at six to eight air changes per hour. So we're very confident that the system that we're proposing, which is something that's been tried and true for you know, even though it's a much more modern product than it was sixty years ago. It's, it, it, it works and it will definitely, we'll, we'll see a difference. Just the idea of moving air, because right now these classrooms only have radiant heat. There's no air movement unless the windows open and there's a breeze. This will bring, this will mechanically bring fresh air in from outside and just move the air in the room, which will actually make you feel more comfortable, especially on hot days.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. That, that, I mean, that also puts a lot of confidence in, in what we're putting into our schools according to how much, how much risk we can mitigate right now. And it seems to me that for a lot of reasons that my colleagues have given, that we have an opportunity to to make a, a difference, a significant difference for our students for, in many of our schools right now. And we have a responsibility to do that. Final comments to you, trustee Hamaguchi as the mover?
Thank you. You know, twelve million dollars is a lot of money and I'm glad we're having this discussion and I'm glad that we're having some differing views because that's what makes a good board is when you listen to everyone, you hear all the different sides because there's more to one, you know, there's more, there's more than one angle to this whole story here. And, you know, it, it's incumbent upon us to, to look at them all. And so it's, it's great that we bring them forward. As been stated, you know, the RTA and the RDPA, the parents and the teachers association feel very strongly toward this. The comment was made earlier on about one or the other, I guess. And I may be naive on this one, but you know, if this passes, and I hope it will, and we go on and, and put the money in to get the mechanical ventilation. If the government comes forward with ventilation money, I expect our board to stand up and say, hey, you know what, we, we spend this money in good faith. If you're now giving money for mechanical ventilation, then give us back the money that we put in there. And I will advocate very strongly towards that one because that's the right thing to do. As for ten years down the road or thirteen year, whenever the new school is, is required. I'm around whether I'm as a trustee or a member of the, of the community, I will advocate strongly for the government to give funding for that new school. We shouldn't have to be forced to make choices about things that are, are critically needed. Clean air and a school for, you know, our growing population. So, and I realize we can't have everything. But this is a good start. And as it's been stated so many times, our staff have done an amazing job of guiding us through the seismic remediations and so forth. And for them to come up with this idea and I mean, I'm very confident it, it's been well thought on their behalf. And, and that, and I'm comfortable with supporting this because it makes a lot of sense. So that's it. Thank you very much. We should go into our boat, I guess.
Thanks, trustee Hamaguchi. Seeing no other comments, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion? And those opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. Thank you very much for the discussion this evening. And we have just skipped ahead here. We are still in our standing committee reports and trustee Hamaguchi, did you want to reference the upcoming meeting for Facilities and Building Committee before we?
Sure.
Oh, maybe you did.
Yeah, I did do that already.
Oh, okay. My apologies. So Finance and Legal Committee Chair, trustee Donna Sargent?
Thank you. Next meeting is April twentieth at ten o'clock.
Thank you. Policy Committee, trustee Tablatney?
Yes, actually for once we haven't got a recommendation for a policy. We'll have to get busy. There are some minutes of the meeting held December thirteenth that are attached in the package. And there was also a meeting held on March seventh. So those minutes will be up and coming, I guess, at the next meeting. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April nineteenth at eleven AM.
Okay, thank you. We're cut, we've come to item ten on our agenda and that is correspondence. We do have a piece of correspondence in the agenda package on page forty-eight. And this is correspondence from QP Local seven one six dated March ninth. And it's regarding the April twentieth National Day of Mourning. So the board has, as we've done in the past, would like to propose motion. And then I'll look for a mover and seconder. Whereas the Board of Education Richmond wishes to express support to QP Local seven one six for their desire to recognize and honor workers who have died and been injured on the job. Be it resolved that the Board of Education Richmond officially recognized April twenty eighth as the National Day of Recognition for workers killed or injured on the job with a one minute cessation of work at eleven AM on Thursday, April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two. And further that in, flags in the district be lowered to half mast on that day. I have a mover for this. Trustee Larson, thank you. And a seconder, trustee Hamaguchi? Any discussion? I'll call the question then. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. It's an important recognition that that happens for our district every year. Item eleven on our agenda, Board Committee Representative Reports. It's a notification that the next Council Board Liaison Committee Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April thirteenth at nine thirty AM and that is available to, for the public to attend. And we have come to the end of our agenda. Thanks to everyone who has been able to hang in with us right to the end. And looking for motion to adjourn. Trustee Larson, thank you. Seconded trustee Tablatney, all in favor? Great. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening, what's left of it and rest of your week. Take care.
Are we now going back into the in-camera meeting?
Richard, we actually are, we finished our in-camera meeting. I know that doesn't happen often, but we did finish prior to the public meeting. So have a good night.
Thank you.